Before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to note that we have interpretation services for this meeting. The interpreter for this evening is Mrs. Villagrana. And Mrs. Villagrana, could you please raise your hand? Please ask her for listening devices if you would like interpretation services. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the City Council meeting of May 16, 2023. Madam Clerk, could you make an announcement about accessing the meeting and call the roll?
In order to participate in the City Council meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under public comment. To raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item, please use the raise hand button in the Zoom meeting portal. If you are using a phone, please press star nine on your telephone keypad and then press star six to unmute your phone. When it is your time to speak, you will be requested to unmute your microphone and speak for the time allotted by the mayor. Your microphone will be requested to, or your microphone will be muted upon completion of your comments. Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino? Here. City Attorney, Mr. Watson, would you like to give the closed session report?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. With respect to the conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Section 5495.7.6 of the Government Code, instructions were provided to the labor negotiator and his team. No other report shall be made.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda this evening is a proclamation, and Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez will be making the presentation.
Whereas the City Council of the City of Santa Maria has supported the role of the Public Works and Utilities Departments to provide vital services to the community, which are an integral part of the city's residents' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an informed community is vital to the operation of public work systems and programs such as the production and delivery of clean water, wastewater collection and treatment, stormwater collection, treatment and control, solid waste collection and disposal, streets and highways, public transit, public buildings and fleet services, and whereas the health, safety and comfort of the community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these services and facilities, as well as their planning, design and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the Public Works and Utilities Departments is materially influenced by the residents' attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, Alice M. Patino, the Mayor of the City of Santa Maria hereby recognizes the week of May 21 through 27, 2023 as National Public Works Week in the City of Santa Maria, and calls upon all residents and civic organizations to recognize the contributions public works officials make every day for better health, safety and quality of life. In witness thereof, she has here to set her hand and have caused the seal of the City of Santa Maria to be affixed here to this 16th day of May, 2023, and the person who is going to receive this is going to be Principal Civil Engineer David Baez for Public Works.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, if I may, I had presented, I prepared something to, to speak. For those who don't know me, my name is David Baez, Principal Engineer, the Engineering Division of Public Works. I'm here tonight representing the Public Works Department, and I'd like to first begin by thanking you for this proclamation, and second, this opportunity to recognize Public Works Week in our city. Public Works Week is a time to honor the dedicated individuals who work tirelessly to build and maintain the infrastructure that supports our community, from roads and bridges to water systems, wastewater systems and solid waste disposal. These professionals endure, ensure our city functions smoothly and remains safe and clean for its residents. During Public Works Week, we'll celebrate the achievements of these unsung heroes, who often go unnoticed but play a vital role in our everyday lives. Their commitment to excellence, efficiency and innovation deserves our recognition and gratitude. Accepting this proclamation not only acknowledges the contributions of our public works professionals, but also highlights the importance of investing in our infrastructure. By doing so, we ensure a sustainable and prosperous future for our city and its residents. In closing, I accept this proclamation for Public Works Week on behalf of the department, gratitude and appreciation for the men and women who work diligently behind the scenes to enhance the quality of life for all residents of the City of Santa Maria. Thank you. If I may add just one, one more note, next week, on Wednesday, the 24th, at the Veterans' Memorial Hall, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., staff will be hosting an event for the general public to experience Public Works. You're all invited. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're leaving us in suspense what kind of an event that Public Works does. Anyway, so just be there, just be there.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Next, we have another proclamation, and I'll be making the presentation. Whereas the time is fast approaching for the 80th Annual Elks Rodeo and Parade, June 1 through June 4, 2023, in the City of Santa Maria, considered by many to be the event of the year. And whereas continuing the tradition of Clarence Manetti and Leland Butch Semus, hundreds of loyal Elks Lodge 1538 members have volunteered and have been drafted to make this rodeo a tremendous success and to cause Elks Lodge 1538 to be named number one Elks Lodge in the United States numerous times over the last 34 years. And whereas the Santa Maria Elks Rodeo Parade will begin at 9 o'clock, 9:00 a.m. on Saturday, June 1, and continue down Broadway from Mill to Enos Streets, and whereas it has been a longstanding tradition to begin wearing Western clothes several weeks prior to the Elks Rodeo. Now therefore, I, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby proclaim June 1 through June 4, 2023, as-go rodeo days in the City of Santa Maria, and encourage all residents and businesses to enter the rodeo spirit by wearing Western apparel. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and have caused the seal of the City of Santa Maria to be affixed here to this 16th day of May, 2023. And here to receive this is Peter Sterling from the Elks Lodge.
We'd like to thank you, the City Council, for this recognition. As we celebrate our 80th Annual Santa Maria Elks Rodeo, we'd like to honor those that came before us and got us to this point, and started us on our journey. We are committed, we are very proud of our heritage and are committed not only to providing a first-class rodeo, but promoting the traditions of a Western lifestyle that include the love of God and country. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Still, I need, I think we need to send out a memo to all of our employees at the great city of Santa Maria, the Western wear. Yes. It's going to cost $250 for each member that didn't dress Western here at the dais tonight.
Yep. It'll all go to charity.
Our next item on the agenda this evening is a presentation of the Businesses of the Month, and Councilmembers Soto and Cordero will be presenting the certificates along with the Chamber CEO Glenn Morris. Good evening, Mr. Morris.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Excuse the lack of Western attire this evening. I didn't get the memo.
Well, that makes it another $250.
Yeah, I heard.
It's a good cause.
It is a good cause, and it's an event we enjoy a lot in, in our office, but, but even more so, my wife thinks it's one of the best things she gets to go do with at me every year. So we're thrilled that 80 years, that's fantastic. We are back this evening for our monthly Business of the Month presentations. As you know, this year, we are focused on healthcare businesses and longstanding businesses. So we'll jump in. Our first business this evening is Marion Regional Medical Center and the Pacific Central Coast Health Centers. They are an acute care hospital, a skilled nursing facility, a network of 50 and probably counting physician offices, labs, imaging centers, home care, hospice and cancer services. Obviously, a full-service healthcare program. The hospital traces its roots to 1940, when Our Lady of Perpetual Health Hospital, or commonly known as Sisters Hospital, opened here in Santa Maria. Since then, they have grown from that one small hospital to serving a population of over 250,000 people with a regional trauma center, award-winning OB department, family practice and OB residency programs, home care, hospice, skilled nursing facilities, acute rehab, and all of the other kinds of services that support that. The hospital currently employs 2,600, and that's probably growing as quickly as they can find them. And the physician group, the healthcare network, is currently in numbers a little over 700 employees today, making them one of the, if not the largest, private employer in our community. In addition to their work in providing us healthcare, the hospital provides financial support for homeless programs, including the new Dignity Moves Community. They provide health services and vaccines throughout the community, including through a street medicine program focused on the Mesteco and Spanish-speaking populations. They partner with Allen Hancock College to support health education programs and train and hire graduates from the college. And their leadership are involved in programs ranging from, of course, the Chamber, but also including Rotary, REACH, the Boys and Girls Club, SenCal Health and many other organizations. Not resting on that growth, the hospital is currently in the process of developing a master plan to include a future parking structure and a second tower for the hospital in addition to a residency clinic and a hospice house at the Sisters Hospital location. Clearly, when the community grows, so too does the need for their services, and we're thrilled that they do it in such a high-quality and accessible and community-oriented way. With us this evening to represent the hospital and the healthcare, health centers is Sue Anderson, President and CEO of Marion Regional Medical Center, and Scott Robertson, the President of the Pacific Central Coast Health Centers. I'd like to invite them forward.
Just real quick, I just want to say, just like the Elks Rodeo 80 years ago, the Sisters started us 83 years ago, and their message to us, their legacy that they tell us every day is that we're here to take care of our community, no matter what the needs are, and I feel like we couldn't have done it without all the support of the community over the years. So really appreciate this honor and appreciate continuing forward through the next years with, with growing as the community grows. So thank you, everyone.
And I would just like to make a comment. I was recruited to Santa Maria 20 years ago from Arizona to work at Marion Regional Medical Center, and to see the amount of growth that we've had in our community and the amount of growth that we've had in access to medical care is extraordinary. I can remember rounding in the older hospital with no air conditioning, and to see the advanced treatments that we have and the world-class sophistication that we have here locally in our own community is really, is really special to me. And it couldn't have been done without the collaboration of our elected officials, of our public servants and the leaders in our community who really, who really demanded this type of service, and we're happy to be a part of that collaboration and continue to provide care in the community. So thank you very much.
I'd like to make one comment. You know, I've seen over the years, and, and my oldest son was born in the old Sisters Hospital, but it's, it's, it's just been amazing, the, the leadership that has taken place in the hospital, and, and it's been so seamless, and it's just growing, and the whole mission of the Sisters is out there, because it's, the hospital always cares for the people in the community first, and they try to fit those needs and figure out what they are and get them here, whether it's the kind of doctors we need, whether it's the kind of services we need, the operating rooms we need and everything. And I, I just tell Sue all the time, you guys do such a great job, the community needs to know what you're doing. You know, some of the things I go to and I see at the foundation lunches just amazes me, and the community doesn't realize how lucky, lucky we are to have you guys here. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Our second business this evening is the A.J. DeAni Construction Company and DeAni Building Corp. Today, A.J. DeAni Construction and its affiliate, DeAni Building Corp, have performed general building construction, pre-engineered metal building construction, construction management, design-build and environmental remediation and restoration services. The company traces its history in the community to just after the war, when A.J. DeAni returned to the community, having served as a Navy Seabee in the Pacific Theater. He began doing grading work for some of the local farmers and formally started A.J. DeAni Construction in 1949, incorporating the business formally in 1958. Since then, the company has grown, has built many of the public works, and I didn't realize that we were selecting a public works contractor to recognize it on Public Works Week, but whoever on my team figured that out, that was well done. Good, good connection there, right? So having built many of the, the public works amenities that are in our community and in the areas surrounding us. They have a long history in military construction, obviously at Vandenberg Air Force Base, but have developed an expertise that has taken the company literally across the country to doing projects in Florida, Alaska, Utah and Mexico, and in the Kwajalein, they'll correct me on how to pronounce that in a minute, in the islands. So obviously, they, they will travel to do work, right? I'm not sure how they take those big bulldozers with them, but they figure that out. The company continues to build launch radar and satellite infrastructure for government and government contractors. They designed-built the first privately-owned launch complex in the country for Spaceport Systems International at Vandenberg Air Force Base, and then construct, after they, and then constructed Slic Six Horizontal Integration Facility, for which they received national recognition. One of the most intriguing accomplishments was the renovation of NASA's 70-meter antenna located at the Deep Space Network Site in Goldstone, California, as operated by the Jet Propulsion Lab. This thing is enormous. It's 230 feet tall, weighs in at about 16 million pounds, but is tuned to a point that it can communicate with spacecraft at the outer edges of the, of the solar system. It's informally known as the Mars Antenna, having received its first signal from a Mars mission in 1966. It's structured 24 stories high, and as I said earlier, it weighs 16 million pounds. And they were brought in after the, the antenna had operated continuously for over 44 years, they had to replace a bearing. Now that sounds simple, right?
Yeah.
It involved requiring lifting the antenna base, which itself weighed 3.2 million kilograms, to remove and replace the steel bearing plates. These guys redesigned the government's work plan, saving them a couple of months of scheduled downtime and over a half million dollars, which I think is noteworthy. For that, the team was recognized by National Geographic and featured on an episode of Nat Gil's World's Toughest Fixes. That sounds like a fun show. So they currently employ a little over 90 people. I think that's with direct employment though, right? Jim, that, that doesn't count all of the, the souls that you help support in the community through project labor as well. The community, the DeAni family community activities are too numerous to list and known by many of us over the 74 years the business has been around. Of note, I think of note to Jim and certainly to me, they are the only family that we're aware of to have been, had three generations serve as Chairman of the Board of the Chamber of Commerce. So A.J. was the Chair in 1964, Jim followed him 20 years later in 1984, and his son Jason was the Chairman of the Board in 2010. In 1997, Jim was also honored as the Chamber Citizen of the Year. Mayors, my pleasure to introduce, representing the, the team, Mike DeAni, Don Ward and Jim DeAni.
On behalf of the family, this is a privilege and an honor to receive this recognition. With just, on behalf of my dad, he's been gone for some time now, but I wanted to represent him tonight as well. So I want to go on record to say that he started in 1946. Now, that's been a point of contention between Dad and the second generation for some years. And you ask why he says 46 and we, we use 49. Well, with some reservation, it's because he didn't get his contractor's license until 1949. So the reservation is, our legacy started with an unlicensed contractor. So, but it's really a privilege and it's a wonderful legacy. And Mayor Patino, Mike and I also were born at Sisters Hospital. In fact, too, when Sisters Hospital, when Marion was first built, actually Sisters Hospital was turned into a residence, a senior residence, and our grandma actually lived in the x-ray room for a few years. So you can imagine how much fun we had with her being out of the x-ray room. But thank you so much. We appreciate it, and we hope to be in the community for many years to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jim. You know, I, I need to comment here because the, the continuing legacy of A.J. and with Jim, Mike and Don, and it's, it's been great, the, what has been given back to the community. You guys have always cared about the community, so you've never done sloppy work that we have to go back and, and, you know, hold your feet to the fire. And it's, it's really great to have a company in our community that is so respected, and I thank you very much. And Mike, you always introduce yourself as the good-looking one, right? But thank, thank you very much for what you've done. A.J. would be proud of you guys. The next item on the agenda this evening is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items or matters not otherwise printed on the agenda this evening. If you are participating via Zoom and wish to make a public comment, now is the time to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting portal. I don't see any, so I won't continue here. The timer will be set to three minutes at the request of the mayor. No other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form or request acknowledgement in Zoom. Madam Mayor, we have two requests to speak, and we have no written comments.
Thank you. And first is Wiley James, who's the first speaker, and then Gary Hall. Good evening, Mr. James.
Greetings, Mayor, and, and people. I'm a recipient of the shelter, a very grateful son for the time that I have been there. However, I need to bring to attention, your attention, Mayor, in the name of safety and of viral that can pop anytime with these recipients. They're very shattered souls, these people, and as much as they think they're clean, they're not. And food is terrible. We could use three pigs, I'm not kidding, to pick up the slop, and the sanitary machinery, everything, it's a, and it's going to get bad. It can happen, it's very blute, you know? I hope I was clear enough?
Yes.
And ARD, because these people go to work, we, a lot of mix. We need ARD to help the coffee, because by morning, we're all so.
Thank you. Gary Hall? Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, staff and the citizens of Santa Maria. My name is Gary Hall. I'm a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Mobile Homeowners Team, or NESBIT. I am here yet again tonight, asking the City of Santa Maria to join over 100 other California jurisdictions that have provided their mobile home park residents with protection from excessive rent increases and in that way helped maintain affordable housing for their senior and low-income citizens. Yes, believe it or not, it's already been nearly a year since Councilmembers Soto, Escobedo and Cordero passed the motion to examine the model lease agreement, looking for ways to improve it and to look at alternatives. Unfortunately, that work remains undone. Since its passage, the mobile home resident representatives have participated in three stakeholder meetings, but it's now been 12 weeks since our latest meeting. We are anxious to get the next meeting scheduled. Instead of helping schedule our next meeting, the park owners prefer to pause and don't wish to continue with negotiations at this time. They seem to think the California Legislature is about to pass legislation that will affect our negotiations. The truth is, no help is coming from Sacramento this year. Instead of waiting to see, we believe it would be in our collective best interest to keep negotiating and to continue honoring the June 7, 2022, sorry, 2022 motion. We would prefer to avoid further delays and keep working on our local issues with local city officials and staff, with local park owners and our local mobile home residents. I will give City Manager Assistant City Manager Hackelman credit for not giving up. As recently as yesterday, he issued an email to the park owners and to the mobile home resident representatives stating his desire, desire to discuss next steps. We responded favorably to his suggestion. We hope the park owners will do the same. It is time to provide protection to all Santa Maria mobile home residents presently living in an unregulated rental market where the current model lease program has been ineffective in protecting homeowner equity and maintaining affordable mobile home housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. That concludes the public comment portion of the agenda. Before we move on, Mr. Still, no comments? Okay, moving on to the next item is the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read the description?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by rule call vote with one motion. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion? Okay. Okay. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion at all? Hearing none? Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next, we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will receive the third quarter financial report summarizing the city's financial status for the period ending March 31, 2023.
And here to give our report for 2023, staff report is made by Director of Finance, Mary Harvey.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, staff, and public. Tonight, I will briefly present the quarterly financial report for the third quarter ended March 31, 2023. I will be primarily reviewing the general fund, including Measure U and the enterprise funds. The beginning general fund balance of $10,071,000 is the unaudited balance at July 1, 2022. Concerning revenues, sales tax receipts through December are approximately 8.1% or about $1.8 million higher compared to last fiscal year. Except for the county and state pools, all industry groups are contributing to the year-over-year increase, with restaurants and hotels showing the highest percentage growth and autos and transportation showing the largest dollar increase. Allocations from the county and state pools dipped slightly compared to the previous year. These revenues are generated by out-of-state sales, including goods sold online to customers within the state. Property, excuse me, property taxes received to date are just over $850,000 or 6.9% more than last fiscal year. The timing of property tax payments received from Santa Barbara County in December, January, April, and May accounts for the revenue's lagging projections. Through March, transient occupancy tax, or TOT, receipts are approximately $61,400 or 2.3% more than last fiscal year and ahead of estimates by nearly $420,000 or 13.3%. The increase in revenues is partially due to inflation prompting hoteliers to raise room rent rates, coupled with steady occupancy rates with the return of community events attracting visitors to the area. Permit revenue is at 100.9% of the budget, or a little over $3.1 million, but is about 11.2% less than the third quarter of the previous year. Construction permit activity is busy and steady. During the third quarter, the city issued 111 permits for accessory dwelling units, a decline from 152 issued for the same quarter last year. The city also issued permits for a new Taco Bell at 560 South Blocher Road, a new medical office building at 501 East Chapel Street, and an expansion of an existing self-storage facility at 1265 West Benaravia Road. Turning to general fund expenditures, they are at 65% of budget and include $6.7 million or about 10.8% in salary savings due to vacancies in most operational departments. The majority of vacancies occurred during the first half of the fiscal year, and in recent months, the labor market has eased, and the city has been more successful in hiring full-time personnel. These budget savings, combined with the latest revenue estimates, are expected to eliminate the need for the $2.7 million LEAF transfer that was budgeted to balance the budget. Concerning Measure U, through the third quarter, revenues are ahead of budget at 80.1% or $20.6 million. Most of the budget underrun, $5.5 million, is in the Fire Department and is primarily due to $4.6 million of budgeted capital projects and equipment purchases, of which only $460,000 has been expended through the third quarter. The Police Department is underbudgeted by about $1.1 million due to vacant positions and planned capital purchases. Community development is underbudgeted by $285,000 because of code enforcement vacancies. The library is underbudgeted by $211,000 because plans to resume Sunday operations have been delayed until July of 2023. Recreation and Parks programs are underbudgeted by $203,000 as a result of vacancies in the Park Rangers Division. The budget in the City Manager's Office is for the costs associated with maintaining the city's mass notifications database. Through March, 89% of Measure U expenditures have been spent on public safety, 6% on youth services, and 5% on quality of life. As for the enterprise funds, the water and wastewater revenues exceeded expenditures by $6.6 million, which is about $2.8 million more than last year. Revenues increased 1.5% or $600,000 compared to the prior year, and that's due to higher revenues generated through increases in the City Council-approved water rates and user fees. Expenses are $2.2 million less than last year, primarily due to lower debt service payments of the $1.5 million for the 2021 A refunding bonds compared to the prior year's payment of $4.3 million for the 1997 Certificate of Participation and the 2012 A refunding bonds. Water and wastewater operational expenses are underbudgeted by 11.3% as a result of personnel savings and vacant positions and the timing of payments of ongoing maintenance and contractual service agreements. For the Solid Waste Fund, revenues exceeded expenditures by approximately $5.3 million because of operational costs being underbudgeted by approximately $3.8 million or 11.4% combined with relatively low capital expenditures made through March. However, there are approximately $7.1 million in encumbered funds for several capital projects, including $3.7 million towards the development of the Integrated Waste Management Facility at Los Flores and $2.4 million for the landfill collection gas system expansion project. Compared to the prior year, revenues increased by $6.4 million and expenditures decreased by $4 million. The Transit Fund revenues have, through March, are more than expenditures by about $125,000. Fair revenue through the third quarter is approximately $424,000, which is about $61,000 less than the fares earned through the third quarter of the prior year. This variance is attributed to a fewer number of bus passes purchased by local school districts this year as districts restored schools' best services. In addition, in the prior year, there were one-time purchases of bus passes for Allen Hancock College and other grant programs that allowed the free Hancock College student bus rights. Transit capital expenditures include $1.7 million for the purchase of two electric replacement buses and $116,000 for bus stop improvements and $94,300 towards transit fleet electrification infrastructure. The fare box ratio through March is 8.1%, is based on the fares received and operating expenses recorded to date. That concludes my staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions Council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Are there any questions from the council?
No, I just want to say, I want to thank you for the report. It was very comprehensive, easy to follow, easy to read. I really appreciated that.
Thank you. She does a great job. Yes, Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and yeah, appreciate it. Thank you for the explanation. It's really easy for us to understand all this complex, all this complex data. And I have a question in regards to vacancy with code enforcement. So what, what's, what are those, might be for, what did that come from? What kind of, what are the missing positions in that, in that department?
I'm going to defer it over to, to Mr. Wu to answer, since that's his department. He can explain how he's managing those positions.
Mr. Wu?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmember. There were two vacancies for code enforcement officer ones. They were filled at, kind of at the mid-year point, and so you could, there's still some savings because there were vacancies earlier in the fiscal year. And I believe there's still one more position that's vacant.
Just one? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do.
Yes. Madam Mayor?
In looking at the general fund balance and the percent that we've received in revenues at 67.7%, am I reading it correctly that we're falling behind in the revenues? And is that because of the property taxes?
The property taxes come in at a different rate, so we'll get, in fact, in April, we've received $5 million, so that's one of our big payments. So we're only, we're behind because of the timing of those. So we anticipate receiving all of that, and we will, we should meet our projections and, and some.
Great. Thank you. And then my other question is pertaining to transfers out. Can you remind me what, what that is referring to?
So transfers out are funds that go to different, different other funds, and in particular for the general fund, the transfer out is to the library fund, and they, the general fund supports the library, and I believe it's $1.7 million that we transfer out to them. And there are other ones that go to the Streets, Measure A, and the street, gas tax. I was trying to think what that was called. We call it Streets, but it's gas tax. And that's for, to meet our measure maintenance of effort that we have to, to maintain to receive those funds.
Great.
That's the majority of it.
Thank you. And then my last question is pertaining, pertaining to Measure, the Measure U fund. We are exceeding revenues for Measure U, and our expenditures are less than anticipated. And so is, from what I'm seeing, and if this trend continues into quarter four or till the end of quarter four, there will be a substantial net at the end of the year. And so perhaps our city manager, or you can remind me as to what policies we have in place, as to what we, what we do with those net, that net amount at the end of the year for Measure U.
When it, when we have a net, revenues over expenditures in this case, then we, it goes back to fund balance, and then it can be reallocated out through, through the budget process, and, but it stays in the same fund.
Okay.
It doesn't go, the, all funds stay with, in their fund unless we do transfers in or out, but that's why we have to do it that way. So we reallocate it based on the budgets that we will be proposing going forward. And we are, you know, of course, already have a approved budget for '23, '24, and we'll be coming with a mid-cycle review next month that will be requesting additional funds and adjustments to that.
So any net in the Measure U fund will be, will stay in there for the following fiscal year, unless we do any transfers out into the general fund? No? Okay.
Unless you decide to appropriate more funds from there. So it goes back into, I'll say, the pot, the savings, the reserves, and then at the end of the year, and then you will decide if you want to appropriate additional funds.
But I think the question is, does it stay in a Measure U?
Reserve.
Reserve. It doesn't get moved to the general fund?
No. It stays in Measure U. Stays in Measure U, and if, the only way it would go into another fund would only be if, if council authorized us to do that.
It's any net in the general fund that goes into our reserves.
Yeah, so the, yeah, the distinction there, so the Measure U, we follow the council's policy of having it all appropriated, 90% public safety, 5% quality of life, 5% youth. If there's any that's not spent, it falls to the fund balance and will recommend reappropriating, reappropriating it at that same rate. So it just will stay for public safety, quality of life, and youth per council's direction. And then on the general fund, if there's any fund balance at the end over, over the anticipated expenditures, then that council policy is to have a third of it go towards our pension liability, a third of it go toward the capital and infrastructure investments, and then a third into fund balance.
Third into LEAF.
Yeah, into the LEAF.
Sorry, something else just popped to my, to my head. When it comes to library and recreation and park services, I see that we're also, our expenditures are not at the rate that we expected them to. And so is there, is, can we get more information as to why that is, aside from the vacant positions, or if there was, if there's anything else?
Primarily the vacant positions, and then for the recreation and parks, they had three park ranger services or officers that were vacant, and I know they're working on filling those. And then the library, they had, they just had not opened on Sundays, and that was part of that plan, was to open on Sundays. So they do plan to do that on, in July.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me ask you, and I don't know who answers this, either Mr. Stillwell or Ms. Harvey, but with our significant drop in revenues that we got through the American Rescue Plan, I know there's some that we haven't spent yet, and I'm hearing rumblings that, that the feds might get, want to take it back. So what do we have planned to hurry up and spend that before the feds come and get it? I guess is basically what I'm saying.
We do have a, a, a big majority of that has been planned to be spent. Some have, we have contracts, so they're obligated, and so that will help to prevent them from taking it back. We don't know what's going to happen. I know that the League of California Cities and National League of California Cities as well, as well as the California Cities is working and trying to, you know, voice that, how detrimental that would be to cities to, to take that back. But at this point, that's, that's what we have planned. I think we have, we have, most of it is already planned by project. I think we're bringing an item to council to review at the next one, to give you an update of where everything's at.
Well, I know it's planned. I know it's committed, but, you know, I, I keep thinking about the RDA money that was taken back, that we already had planned, we already had committed. So it makes me really nervous when either Sacramento or Washington decides they want to take the money back. So anyway. Did you want to comment, Mr. Stillwell?
Just, we will bring an item for, at the next council meeting, because by then, I believe we'll have clarification of what law Congress passes in that regard.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Do we have any questions online, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
No requests to speak? Okay, thank you. The request to receive and file the financial report for the third quarter and no, no further action is needed at this time. Next item will be a report by the city manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next meeting of the City Council is June 6, and we will bring you the update of the American Rescue Plan Act, the update of what we've spent and, and what Congress, if anything, has changed in between now and then. We'll also have the General Plan Consistency, Consistency Report and Agreement for an Air Pollution Control District Grant and an easement for the Coast Hills property. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll get the oral reports from our city council. Mr. Cordero, we'll start with you.
On, on 5-3, I attended a dinner at the Elks for Student of the Month and Citizen of the Year that was put on by the Elks, and it was, it was an interesting program. The city was recognized for their involvement with the Citizen of the Month. On 5-9, I attended a State of the Education locally at the Radisson, at, at the airport. It was, it was a very interesting and dynamic speech by several people discussing where we are in, at the local level. There was a lot of activity from all of the districts in the, in the area, meaning the primary district, the high school, and of course, the college. primary district, the high school, and of course, the college, Hancock. On that same day, I attended a groundbreaking out at the Hope Village that a project that's been put on and sponsored primarily by the county. It's a there's a lot of reservation about this project because you're going to be bringing some homeless people out to the south side of the city, close to the county buildings out there, close to the Centeno Building and where Sees Candy is and Starbucks and all of that. I personally I see the apprehension on the part of the public, but it's got some components to it that are a little bit different. I have high hopes for it. The supervisors that were there, La Vignino and Bob, it was well attended, and I think before before we put this thing on the bad side of the ledger, I think that we ought to really give it a chance, and it very well could be something that's looked at not only at the county level here, but statewide and perhaps even nationally as to doing something a little bit different. I think the ace in the hole here for this project is the fact that good Sam is is managing it. On the 11th, I attended the I attended a ribbon cutting out at the Miller Winery out in Siskel area. It was an interesting fiasco, but the people were just outstanding. They were it were just so nice and willing to do just anything they can for the Santa Maria community. On the 12th, I attended a fire a badge pending ceremony at Station One for the Fire Department at 314 East West Cook Street. I thought that was very well put on. We we saw the Fire Department expand their their ranks. It was an outstanding program that was put on by our interim fire chief, and it was it was worth going to if you had the opportunity. On the 16th, I today, I went to the business property meeting. I have to if I could talk for an hour on this meeting that that was put on by the chief, I would. Let me just say that during my course of my career for over 50 years with the city, I've attended many meetings like this, and they're not always positive. Sometimes there's a lot of negativity going on. There was a certain energy in the room out there that that was very positive. The the people that we have in the city, meaning Chief Snyder, Jack Dunn, Trevor, others that were out there speaking, did an outstanding job of relating to the people, and there was an energy in the room that was one of how can we work together? What can we do to make things better? How does it why is it happening this way? And of course, the DA was there to talk about the city of Santa Maria is not in a position that where people seem to be wanting to move out like like there are other areas in our country where people can't hardly wait to get out. And it was just very heartwarming to understand that we live in a community that is not only supports its police, but in its in its fire department, but there's a lot of gratitude coming back from the public, and I was I think it was clearly one of the best police, citizen meetings that I've ever been to in all of my affiliation with the city. And I think my hat's off to Chief Snyder and his crew for for their excellent presentation and answering all the questions, and they didn't leave anything on the table. They they had a book there saying, hey, if we didn't get your question and you want to ask it later, write it down here in this book, and let's let us let us get to you. It was every little thing that I think of that it was it was covered in that meeting, and I'm proud to associate myself with it. So that would be it for me, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cordero. Ms. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On May the 3rd, I attended the Citizen of the Year and Student of the Year Awards at the Elks, and congratulations to them. And on the 4th, I attended Santa Maria Ballet Chamber of Commerce Hispanic Mixer. Very well attended. Really good to see the committee coming together in those kind of events. I applaud, I recognize the effort of the Chamber of Commerce is putting on and creating this network of Latino and Hispanic businesses. And today, I also attend the 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 meeting, which was, and I do agree with Councilmember Cordero, really well put together. It was a really smooth and interesting conversations, and I heard good things from from everybody who attended, so I recognize the good work that the leadership of our chief it's put in, and the whole crew really really positive meeting, and that's that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Aguilera Hernandez?
Yes. On 5-3, I was on the Ben Hayes Show. 5-4, I attended National Day of Prayer. 5-8, I had a meeting with Cal Hospital Association regarding the regional hospitals. 5-9, I attended the State of Education. On the same day, I attended the groundbreaking for Hope Village. And on 5-12, I had the honor of swearing in the new officers for the Fire Department, so they had a graduation and promotional ceremony, and I was able to swear in the new hires, so that was that was an honor.
Thank you. Ms. Soto?
Thank you. On on Wednesday, May 3rd, I attended the quarterly schools event or meeting, I should say. On Saturday, May 6th, I attended the Cycle Mania event put on BBC Central. It was a 10-mile bike ride all over Santa Maria. I was using an e-bike, but didn't know that I could adjust the settings, so.
Oh, gosh.
I got a great workout. On Sunday, May 7th, I was a keynote speaker for the scholarship awards ceremony at the Minerva Club. On Tuesday, May 9th, I attended the groundbreaking for Dignity Moves. On Wednesday, on Thursday, May 11th, I attended the Marian Hospital Breakfast with the CEO. And on I forgot to mention that I also attended the Citizen of the Year and Student of the Year Awards by the Elks on May 3rd, and somewhere in there, we also attended the super early event with the State of Education.
Super early. Yes.
Yeah, it was super early.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to forward a question to Mr. Stillwell before you give your final.
Go ahead.
I I I didn't mention this earlier, and I actually apologize, Mr. Stillwell, springing this on you, but I got a call from a constituent that was asking, and I didn't know the answer, and so I I kind of buffaloed my way through it. But some time back, we were given some fees that we were discussing, and they asked me where we were with that, and I said, I don't know, and I felt kind of bad about it. But anyways, I'm wondering if we're done with that, can we get briefed? Because I don't know who the other person is, but they came to this guy because they knew that this guy knew me, and they said, call him up and find out where we are. And I said, I, you know, I'm sorry, I don't have any idea, but if you could brief us on that as to where we are, I assume we're finished with that, but I'd like to know. Thank you.
Yeah, the council has we're building the adopted fees into the upcoming budget, so we're going with what the council's adopted.
Thank you. On May 1st, I attended a meeting with West Coast Customs Car Club. They car show, I shouldn't say car club. They will be here Memorial Day weekend, so the cruise is going to be Friday night, and then the West Coast Custom Car Show will be Saturday, Friday and Saturday. So people can start lining up, getting their chairs, lining up around down Broadway for the cruise. And you have to be registered. You just don't get come up from side street and put your car in the in the cruise. You have to be registered. May 2nd, did the Ben Hayes Show. On May 3rd, attended the Citizen of the Year and Student of the Year Awards. And, you know, thank you, thank you to the Elks. They're always there to do special things in recognition of people in our community. On May 4th, attended a LAFCO meeting and the National Day of Prayer. On May 5th, I I was asked to go to Downtown Fridays. If you haven't been to Downtown Fridays, you really, really need to go. They recognized a soccer team composed of junior high kids. I wish I had the name here. I didn't. I had forgotten the name, Junior High Kids, and they won that the Southern Division, I think it is, and this is the first time this has happened in Santa Maria. And I thought they were high school kids, but they come from all the different junior highs in Santa Maria. On May 6th, I attended the went to the liberal oh, the Albion Southern California Central California Club. Thank you. I attended teleconference livable California meeting. Comes on at 10 o'clock on Saturdays. May 7th, the California Alliance of Local Electeds. And on May 9th, I attended the State of the Education very, very early in the morning and did the groundbreaking at Hope Village with everyone else. May 15th, did the 3CE, which is our electrical grid consortium that we belong to, did the Policy Board of Directors meeting, and this morning did attended at the crime business business property crimes meeting, and thank you, chief, for putting that on. That was excellent, and I agree with you, Mr. Cordero. And that is it, ladies and gentlemen. Meeting is adjourned.